Roll call for the city council meeting Wednesday, October 15th at 7:30 PM. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky. All please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Mr. President, I ask that we remember all those in our community locally and globally that are less fortunate than we are in any and every way. We ask that we remember those who have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. And very specifically, the young people who died in the car accident a couple of weeks ago, just remember their families and their friends, and those services were just earlier this week, so let's keep them in our thoughts and prayers and in our meditation time. Also, we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
Pledge your allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approve of minutes from the meeting of October 1st, 2014, and bells for payment on October 17th, 24th, 24th and 31st, 2014. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.
Are there any requests for repository sales? Are there any requests for repository sales? Are there any requests for repository sales? Hearing none. Citizens to be heard. Mr. Randy Barnes. Is Mr. Randy Barnes present? Mr. Barnes is not present. Any citizens wish to address council can do so at this time. Please give us your name and address. And each citizen has five minutes. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Austin. Address 1262 West 9th Street. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, I'm here because I'm very concerned about an addition to your agenda tonight, and I'm requesting additional time because the addition to the agenda, from what I understand, is irregular, so I'm wondering if it might be possible to have additional time to talk tonight. Okay, well, then, the, I have in my hands here the McBride Viaduct feasibility report. It's a fairly hefty series of volumes here that was issued in April of 2014. It has just come into our hands this week, and what's fascinating about it is having looked through these pages, skimming them, they're primarily focusing on the cars and trucks and the needs of traffic. And it, what it brings to mind is, first of all, I just want to say it's a lot of work, it's a very, a lot of careful work, very thoughtfully done. What I see as a problem with it, though, is that it is focusing again on vehicles and not the people in the area that's going to be affected by the decisions that are made about the McBride Viaduct. I'm put in mind of Idahoos who pointed out that systems analysis, a way of gathering data and making examinations, fools people into thinking that they're making very good decisions, but when they're oftentimes not paying attention to the things that cannot be counted, the more, the more personal kinds of things that affect people directly. I do want to point out that the, again, this, this series of documents has only these few pages here that I'm holding in my hands that are dealing with pedestrians and with bicycles. And so, for instance, page nine acknowledges that pedestrians and bicycles are regularly using the viaduct. In fact, they're using it on a daily basis that exceeds by the use of the Bayfront Highway, even though they do have the pedestrian and bikeway there. In other words, people are continuing to use this preferred viaduct. I also want to point out something that's very troubling to me in terms of social justice. If you take a look at page 31 of this report, you will notice that the areas most impacted by this closing of the viaduct are at a much higher rate of population of minorities, Asian, Pacific Islanders, Hispanic and African American. So while the city as a whole is 75% Caucasian and approximately the balance is a mixture of the minority residents, in one area alone of this, the area with the largest discrepancy, we have 74% of the people living in the neighborhood adjacent to the viaduct will, our minority population. And so, my, my biggest concern here is that while, as well-meaning as this document is, it does not take into consideration the full import of how damaging it will be to the neighborhood, to its identity, to, to lose this, this connectivity. The other thing that I think is really troubling to me is that this document does not consider what really progressive cities across the United States and around the world are doing. They are taking structures like this and redeveloping them to become an asset, and we know that we really do need an asset, especially on the east side, something to help focus attention and redevelopment in that area. I'm actually done before my time is up, I think, here. Oh, wait, we've got a couple of examples. I just want to point out here, the, I think that it's difficult unless you actually walk across it and actually, you know, and drive around the area to understand the difference. It was characterized as a mere 635 feet indifference in walking. In fact, if you, it, it, it does not take into consideration the longer end of the triangle that occurs with the Bayfront Connector and also the much less attractive.
Your time is up, Ms. Austin. Thank you very much.
My name is Adam Trot. I reside at, I reside at 531 West 6th Street. I'm a local architect and working with Lisa Austin on the strategy for repurposing the McBride Viaduct. Essentially, the conversation rests upon what we brought up back in the public meeting in the spring, and that is that there are conversations about this objective, but they're not holistic conversations. They're specifically limited to vehicular traffic counts, numbers, that people crank numbers and they feel confident because the numbers tell them something. However, there is almost nothing in the report about how the viaduct plugs into the existing neighborhood urban circulation. By the report's own findings in the appendix, page... Figure D11 and Figure D12, this is a report on peak hour usage of the Bayfront Connector as compared to the McBride Viaduct. And even though the McBride Viaduct is very unwelcoming looking, it's got barriers in front of it, it's got potholes and things in it, it's not very inviting, however, at peak usage, the Bayfront Connector has three pedestrians in the morning, three in the evening at a peak hour. The McBride Viaduct has 30 in the morning and 16 in the evening during a peak hour. Bicycles, they didn't see one on the Bayfront Connector in AM or PM peak hours. On the McBride Viaduct, there were five in the morning and three in the evening during the same time period that they were counting. They have in the appendix the data that they collected, and oddly enough, the Bayfront Connector data mentions origin and destination, where the McBride Viaduct data collection doesn't address that. So it's, I, I think there's evidence here that the attitude was, let's make the report fit the answer we want. So we're concerned about that. We're concerned about, there's nothing in the report about quality, it's simply number counts. And they, they miss a whole lot about what that viaduct was and can be to that neighborhood. The report itself acknowledges the east side needs efforts to, for revitalization. They're saying we should investigate projects that will help revitalize the east side. We already have one. It's repurposing this. They acknowledge that there are sensitive archaeological sites in the area that need to be investigated further, and at this point, what we'd really like is just, there, there's cost on the table, there's liability on the table. We understand that, we want to work with it, but we don't want to lose this urban fabric asset based on traffic counts. We'd like to work with the team to repurpose this, get us back into the modern world, and really, the report gives a waving hand to bicyclists, really, and that's a big part of where the city's going to be going in the future, especially on the east side with the minority population. You need to address issues that cover the broadest amount of people. So when you're doing traffic studies, all the people that take the bus, walk, ride bikes, stroll their babies in carriages and things, they're not counted. And we need to make sure, from a social justice issue, we address what those populations need there. And the data that they themselves publish shows, they want the viaduct, they don't use the Bayfront Connector. And if we force them to use it, it just puts them farther out and in a very uninviting space where there's nothing but concrete and cars going almost highway speed all the time. The viaduct gives them a quality of life alternative and reengages the connectivity in that area for bikes, pedestrians, people that want to walk up to the Walmart on Broad Street. It's a lot quicker going up the viaduct than going over to the Bayfront, over that awful bridge, and then getting back on track where they would have been earlier on the viaduct. And the schools going from south to north, the viaduct's easily the preferred route. I think it's a no-brainer, and we're just asking that perhaps an extension to come up with more strategy, we've been exploring the funding strategy for maintaining it, that's a possibility. If it has to go out to demolition bid, I request a bid alternate to remove decks only and leave me the peers to work with, and we can redeck it for bikes and pedestrians.
Thank you.
This is the image of decks, with decks only. So in other words...
Excuse me. Your time is up.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is McDonald. My property's 18th and Reed. I have a few issues. I've talked to you about this before. We're not asking, it's concerning the time was taken away from us. You all didn't even discuss it with us, you just up and took it. But you say you're honorable peoples up there. When you took it from us, that was nothing but stealing. Honorable peoples don't steal, but you stole that from us. And I've been asking you, we don't want the date back. Just stack that five minutes on another five minutes, and it seemed to have been asking too much. I don't think it's asking too much. I think you should do it. You took it, I think you could give it back. It'll be different. What is five more minutes up here? You all don't want to hear what we got to say. You run for office, you ask us for our votes, and you don't want to hear what we got to say. We listen to what you all say, but you don't want to hear what we got to say. It would be better if you'd stack our time up there. It don't make sense for you not to do it. I want you to think about it, because I'm serious. I don't come down here just to be coming. When I come down here, I got something to say, whether you all want to listen or not. I'm going to say it, some of it anyway. You don't really have time to say too much in five minutes. I want to go this other way, too. I have been asking you about those cameras on the police cars. Ain't nobody saying nothing about it. But there's going to come a time, you're going to wish you had have put them on there. The police going to want them on there. It don't make sense for not to put them on. You do everything else you want to do. Are you making your own decision, or is it the mayor that don't want them on there? Somebody don't want them on there. We're taxpayers. When there's an accident and you have those cameras on, the cameras will speak for themselves. And if any line going on, the camera's going to tell the truth. I see, now the police have, they're like judges and jury now. It don't make sense. You don't hardly ever see their supervision with them, they make the decisions. Now, you got some good police out there, don't misunderstand me, I'm not anti-police man, but you got some out there that really shouldn't be on the force. They're disrespectful, and that's wrong. You know that, I guess you know it. The police, they're servants. They're supposed to serve. They're more like Gestapos, a bunch of them, the way they talk to some of the peoples out there. Peoples come to me and tell me, I said, "Go see Joe down there, go see the mayor. He their boss, he's telling them what to do," or somebody down there telling them what to do. These young bucks you got out there now, I don't know how they got on the police force. They're so disrespectful. You got some good ones on there, too, now, don't misunderstand me. All of them are not disrespectful, but you need to kind of curb their language and teach them how to use a little honor, because there's not much honor among them. No. I'll discuss that later on with you, but these jobs, these, these companies, the city hire to do different work. I don't see no minorities. What's wrong with y'all? If they don't have no minorities, then they shouldn't get no contracts. It's just that, just like that. That ain't hard to do. Y'all supposed to be leaders up there. Lead. Don't be followers. I've always told, it's better to lead if you're going to lead. I think you should do something about that. Think about it, anyway. There should be minorities on any job, the city, any contract the city sit out there. There should be some minorities on it. These people can't go and take no jobs. Lot of these contractors are all family. You take these, peoples coming in here, opening up all these gas stations and so on, they don't hire nobody but their own. They don't hire nobody but their own. You go to any of them, you're not going to see nothing but that nationality there. They don't hire nobody else, and that ain't the way it should be. That ain't the way it should. A lot of that money they use probably is taxpayers' money. Y'all should do your job, do something, don't just be sitting up there. Say something or do something. If you're not going to do nothing, you don't have no business up there. We need somebody up there that's going to represent us, and I, I mean all the taxpayers. Y'all, y'all got to get off the stick. Y'all, you need to get serious. There are a lot of things happening around town, this town. We got more peoples coming in here, I don't know what they're coming in here for. This is about a prejudice town as I ever been in, and I was raised here. There's so much prejudice among the police when it comes to peoples of color, and they'll beat the hell out of a white man, too. Because I've seen it happen with these eyes. Y'all should, I don't know, I don't know how you're training your police, but they're like Gestapos, some of them. But like I said, you got some decent ones on there, you got some good ones on there. You ain't finna say my time's up already, are you?
Mr. Mack, your time is up, Mr. Mack. Matter of fact, you got an extra 35 seconds.
Well, I appreciate it, but I want y'all to think about what I'm telling you, because just like I'm telling you, I'm not coming down here just to blow hot air.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
I'm going to get you a digital one. Go to Kraus.
I love this town, I'll start out with that, you know, I went, I graduated college in '75, and I had degrees that I could have went anywhere I wanted to and made probably twice the money I made when I got home, but I'm telling you, I have to get to where I'm going. And there's a few issues I have a problem, I live downtown now.
Okay, your name and address, please.
John Lane, 515 State Street. We have Gannon, we have Erie Insurance, Hammitt, and Partnership that clean up downtown Erie. The litter and the dirt down here is ridiculous. I mean, how we put up with that as a, as a city, as a garbage can, you're half a block from a garbage can downtown Erie. It's just, it's so irritating. Walked out, see McDonald's bags and crap everywhere. I don't know if this is the form for this or not, am I, am I correct here? And I just think we need to be more, you know, everybody looks for big things that make a city work. A lot of times, I had a restaurant, everybody was, "What'd you do?" It wasn't big things, just little thing here, little thing there. A lot of little things make a big thing. And we would just, stuff like that, like the littering, if we would just be concentrating, I mean, a healthy, clean city is a healthy, clean city with a mind and body. You know, maybe these types of things, I think, are important. Another thing I've, we've done some bonehead things, that sidewalk mall was a bonehead thing, but last Christmas, I was excited to go downtown for the, lighten up the Christmas, and not to be humorous, but I'm going to be humorous. Those little things look like teepees for, air-conditioned teepees for pygmies or something, I don't know what that was. It would be better to do, I know we don't have the people that used to do it, they did it, I guess, for free or something, some company, but it'd be better to do a little something real nice than a whole lot of something that looks tacky. I mean, that was, that was humiliating, yeah, I mean, it was embarrassing to be a citizen of Erie for that there. So better do a little nice than a whole lot of nothing. My last issue here is the Bayfront Connector. I did concrete work when I was a young man, and those walls are beautiful, but also another very expensive. Why we have trees and ivy and bushes growing up? We could have just put regular concrete up there. Either we should maintain that or get a refund or something, I don't know. Those are beautiful walls, and it's nice for tourists to come in to see that, but it's kind of, again, tacky to have it all covered up with trees and brushes and ivy, and I think that should be addressed. And that's, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? I believe we have some guests from, is it Villa? Villa Maria Academy, would you like to, someone or all, come up to the mic and tell us, you're here for a purpose, I'm sure.
Yeah, we're here for a purpose. My name is Maggie Rakowski, and I'm a senior at Villa, and we are honors government students, and we are here just observing the meeting for a paper that we are going to be writing about the, how a city council meeting works and the hot topics, and about the citizens to be heard and what goes on basically, and our opinion of it. I think this is a good way, a good project for us to get involved, because as you can see, there's very few young people here, and I think that this paper urged us or encouraged us to come to this meeting and get involved in our town, and I think it was a good way to get more students involved and getting us ready and more excited to vote, which a good government class should do. I'm turning 18 soon, and I'm very excited to vote and be involved in my government, so this is an exciting meeting to be at, and I'm glad to be here and become more involved. And I think I'd like to see more students our age, but this is a good start, I think, for us, and then we can tell others that it was a good idea and get them to come to and be involved.
Thank you very, very much. You're welcome to be here.
Can we have a copy of your paper when it's done?
Yeah.
Well, if it's an A paper. No, I'm just kidding. No, but it'd be interesting for us to hear and see what your opinion is. Absolutely, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hey, we have some additional guests in the back. Would you like to come up?
Brienne.
Tell us about yourself.
Right, put you on the spot, right?
My name's Brienne Helen, I'm the co-director of the Independent Living Program at Family Services, and we work with foster youth aged 14 to 21, and one of the things that we like to do is try and get them civically engaged and just be aware of what's involved in the community. So we've had them meet some local politicians, and we thought it would just be nice to bring them to some city council meetings and county council meetings as well, just to become familiar with names and faces and know what's going on in their community, because, like she said, I mean, these are the voices of the future, and they need, they need to be familiar with what's going on. So it's basically just us trying to expose them and hopefully predispose them to become active as they get older. Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much, and welcome, and I'm hopeful that you get a lot of information from this meeting through your observation, and we're glad to have you here, appreciate it. I think we have a Villa grad. You graduated from Villa?
Me?
Yeah.
Mercyhurst.
Mercyhurst? Oh, you see how she looked at me?
Wrong school. Wrong.
They're both at school.
I want a resume of everybody, so I don't make a mistake again. Oh, wow. We do thank you, and we do appreciate you. Thank you very much. Any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none. Rose?
Okay, works now. That'll take us to new business.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Councilman Jones. I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, any separation? Hearing none.
All right, moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Harancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.
Mr. President, are we going to vote on that, where the rules are?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to get to that, but first, I just wanted to point out that number 10 under purchase orders, Rico USA Inc., there was a change in that resolution and after the agenda was printed, so I just wanted to read the corrected, corrected, it was supposed to go under contract, so let me just read to you the corrected contract, that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue an agreement to Rico USA Inc., 3736 Boardman, Canfield Road, Canfield, Ohio, to upgrade the two main production printers and the print controller for a 60-month lease and service contract used in the print shop at the city of Erie to cost of $9,670.14 per quarter, with estimated print cost of $1,654.94 per quarter. And then we have a waive rules, Mr. President. That is a late resolution from Public Works regarding McBride Viaduct. Can we vote on the waive rules?
Can you, can you read the, or read it first?
Do you want me to read the resolution before the waive rules?
Okay.
All right, this is sponsored by Mr. Mursky and seconded by Mr. Brennan, that the proper city officials, to execute the federal aid bridge project reimbursement supplement agreement number 010T57-B between the city of Erie and the Commonwealth of the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the study preliminary engineering of the city of Erie McBride Viaduct East Evanston Bridge. Estimated cost for this study is $7,402.21. The total amount of the reimbursement is $7,2221. Commonwealth incurred costs... seven twenty-two twenty-one. Commonwealth incurred costs are estimated to be twenty thousand dollars. The cost sharing is federal one hundred percent, state zero percent, municipality zero percent. Estimated cost for preliminary engineering is five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The total amount of the reimbursement is five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. Commonwealth incurred costs are estimated to be two thousand dollars. The cost sharing federal is eighty percent, four hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred. State fifteen percent, seventy-eight thousand four hundred and fifty. Municipality five percent, twenty-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. The cost in Exhibit A A A are increased from seven thousand twenty-two twenty-one to one million two hundred and eighteen eight seventy-one. And we'll vote on the waive rules. Mr. Brennan?
No.
Mrs. Rancunzo?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Merzky?
No.
Mr. Witherspoon? Okay, this resolution fails to adopt ayes, yeas, three nays, four. Or we did not waive the rules.
Just waived the rules, right.
We did not waive the rules. Ayes, three nays, four. That will take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Mr. President, real quick, so that, that item will have to be on our next agenda?
Yes.
So it'll have to be sponsored by someone again and go through that process again? Okay, so it'll be on our next agenda.
Committee report. Mr. Merzky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. I attended a Mothers Against Teen Violence meeting this afternoon, trying to work on a comprehensive plan with the Police Department. Neighborhood Watch was involved with Steve Simmelcare and Sonia Arrington with Matt V. I represented city council, and there were officials there from the school district and neighborhood officials from Eastside Eagles Neighborhood Watch, trying to get a comprehensive plan to deal with the teen violence, especially with the after-school, to and from school, that safe passage area. So that was something that we talked about today. Also, I attended the Neighborhood Watch meeting at the beginning of the month for Mercyhurst Neighborhood, and I've been in touch with Steve Simmelcare on Neighborhood Watch issues across the city. Attended St. Joe's Oktoberfest. It was a great event. Who said Erie's just fun in the summertime? They haven't been out to Oktoberfest because it was a great time. Held in the autumn at St. Joe's, and they're doing good things over there. I also attended Making Strides Against Breast Cancer in Perry Square over the weekend. And just today, there was another girl at, in the Erie School District, a young lady diagnosed with breast cancer. It affects so many families. And so I'm wearing my pink today. It was, we had a pink day at East High for, against breast cancer, for breast cancer awareness. I also attended a workshop held by the Neighborhood Resource Organization. They had Steph Chapman come in and give a presentation and a workshop to neighborhood leaders and community leaders about what the Neighborhood Resource Organization is about and connecting resources to communities. And I think the natural inclination of so many people is to look to government to do things. And what the Neighborhood Resource Organization is saying is, no, we can look at all of our strengths in our neighborhoods, and that can help us to build up our neighborhoods and by strengthening ourselves, rely less on police intervention and more of a self-regulation. Finally, not finally, but I also went to the Erie Insurance Arena and checked out the new high-definition scoreboard. The Otters are off to a great season from the Convention Center Authority. Attendance is up with the arena. And when you have a winning product on the floor, it helps that Connor McDavid is a very good hockey player. And then just finally, you know, looking at what we've, we're gonna waive the rules on tonight, there was some misinformation out there. I just wanted to make sure that citizens to be heard knew that we weren't voting on a bridge. We were voting on a reimbursement. Reimbursement for one point two million dollars from the state. And it would, for four years, the bridge has been closed. And for four years, the East Side has been without access. And I work down at East High School. I travel that way every day. My family still lives on the eleven-hundred block of Twelfth Street. I go down there most Mondays. And I just, you know, I'm not gonna play politics with taxpayers' money, and I'm not gonna put the City of Erie on the hook for that one point two million dollars. And I think that it's very important that this reimbursement passes at our next meeting for a couple reasons. One, we can't put the city taxpayers on the hook for that one point two million dollars. Second off, it's an eight million dollar project total, providing East Side access, providing safe passage, pedestrian passage for my students as they cross over the highway that they have now. And it opens up the Buffalo Road Corridor, and, and we need those jobs desperately, those construction jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Merzky. Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended a workshop. It was called the Erie Blight Summit, focused on code enforcement and conservatorship. And it was on October ninth. It was attended by many of the City of Erie staff. The focus was really on the most effective methods to fight blight in our cities. Of course, we all know that there's many neighborhoods that need attention, and we need to keep focusing our efforts. But one of the main goals is to put these vacant properties back into productive use, paying taxes, and of course, not being dilapidated and vacant, of course, is the, is the goal's there. We heard about many new innovative techniques and tools to fight blight. And the, a lot of these new initiatives are being launched in other cities. So we're kind of looking at some of what they're doing, seeing what's successful, what's not successful, seeing what we can do, you know, what are the simple ways of just starting off and then going forward from there. But, you know, as everyone knows, improving our neighborhoods and making them safe is crucial to our economy and, of course, our region's future. So I'll continue to work, work with the group and work with the city zoning and planning to try to make, bring some of these forward. I attended a Port Authority work session Tuesday. I just wanted to report there that the, for Don John Shipping, they're gonna be doing dry dock repairs. And, you know, it's very important for their operations to get this repair done. They do a lot of work in the dry dock area. So they received the contract and approved the contract for engineering services for that project, so that can now go forward. I'm also putting together, actually, I put together a facade improvement workshop along with the Erie Downtown Partnership, the American Institute of Architects, Northwestern P.A. and Preservation Erie. It's gonna be held November thirteenth from eight till noon at the UPMC Community Room at the, at one oh-nine Boston Store Place. But really, the opportunity for this workshop is to try to bring together people to talk about, professionals to talk about facade design, restoration, repair, historic tax credits and funding. What I'm hoping to do in the future, after this workshop, is do something for residential properties, to really try to bring together, you know, the minds and to talk about these things and bring forward ways to fund it. Because, you know, we could talk about good design, we could talk about preservation, but if we don't find, have ways to fund it, then it's not really gonna happen. But anything that can make our downtown more inviting, you know, that's what we're hoping to do, to try to help out our downtown property owners. You know, anyone, anyone in a, kind of a, you know, downtown area could benefit from this, as well as residential property owners. Also, I did want to talk about the McBride Viaduct issue today. The, there's, I think the, the reason I had voted the way I voted to not approve the, the funding today is because I think many, many people in council don't know fully the, what the preferred alternative is, what all the pieces and parts are, how that makes it up. So I think what we're gonna do is have thirty days to be able to fully review the information, to present at the final report. But I think everyone knows, and we had a discussion on this, that the preferred alternative needs to go forward. We do not want to jeopardize any funding. And I think we've got an assurance from PennDOT that, that delaying it would not, would not harm, harm the funding as we go forward. But definitely, we need to keep this, keep all the funding secured. But I think to fully understand what's going on with the preferred alternative is something that we'd like to do, so that when we're asked questions in public, that we can properly answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Brennan. Councilman?
Mr. President, no report this evening. Thank you.
Excellent report. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Really quickly, I just want to take a moment, talk to the young students, young government students. Because what we did in our agenda, you probably saw this long piece of paper and all these items, and then we make a motion to vote on the balance, and then we're done. And so basically, what happens is, if we have an ordinance, whether for first or second or final reading, for, first reading or final passage for an ordinance, we have to read those in their entirety as a part of our rules for our meeting. We did not have any of those tonight. The rest of our agenda, from new business to contracts and transfers, old business, those things can, we've already either discussed them in the back, or we've got memos on them. We didn't have any further questions or needed any other dialogue about it. So we voted on the balance or the remainder of the agenda so that we could kind of expedite the meeting for the evening. So I just wanted, you know, explain that because, you know, go from this to be moving to committee reports was pretty fast. And we didn't see, you know, we didn't go over any of that stuff. And you can put that in your paper, and you can cite me as a resource. All right, I'm gonna check it out. The next thing, I attended the truancy task force summit today. Several individuals from several different communities, parts of the city, nonprofits, education, et cetera, strategizing, continuing to strategize around creating some, I guess, some legitimate ways to, to deal with the issue of truancy and to increase the graduation rate of our students in Erie County. And not just that, but to also promote, find ways to insert positive and pro-social, healthy choices for students and young people in our, in our area. And so that was very productive, I felt, today. We got a lot out of it. A lot of different perspectives and angles and, and ways of doing things. But it's good to come together and kind of glean from each other what's valuable and what works. Also, yesterday, attended the nonprofit day at the Erie Convention Center. And I know sometimes nonprofits have, like a mixed bag in our community, because on one end, you know, you take up so much space and property and no property tax. But on the other end, nonprofits offer so much to the community by way of service, and even quality of life, and even existence of a valuable life for many of our residents who, who need additional services and supports. So that was a very effective day. And what I liked most about that is that a lot of the ideas were around teaching nonprofits to become more sustainable and self-sustaining, and to generate revenue in more really healthy ways. And to add, you know, several ways to just continue to add beyond what you provide as a service, add value to the community, giving back to the community. And so that was a lot of the theme yesterday, and it was very enjoyable and, I think, very beneficial. I always have a, like periodically, can, and to Mayor's office, this comes up about restaurants or downtown, particular restaurants and bub, bars, pubs, whatever, the right-of-way on the sidewalk and the easement. And we always say, wow, like, that's expanding and adding value to their business. What's the city, or is the city able to get any kind of compensation for that? And we always kind of end up, well, not really sure. Is the city, like, what are we doing? How does that work? Because some of the downtown businesses have permanent, or rather permanent, pieces, build-outs for the, for the nicer, you know, times of the year that adds quality to their business. Not inside their property, but out into the sidewalk, very deep into the sidewalk. And so maybe we, and I'll talk to John, too, at the downtown group and see if, like, is there a fee? Do we recoup anything for that? Because we're, I don't think we ever have, but periodically, like, this comes up again. And we don't, you know, we don't really seem to go anywhere with it. But I was downtown again today, and I was just like, that is really nice. And then I was like, wait a minute, are they paying to, because they're benefiting. And so I think we're giving away something that maybe we could at least, not that we want to deter, but we want to at least, like, get something out of it if a business is benefiting. Finally, I really value, you know, people's opinion. And even if I disagree with it, I, I would wish sometimes that many of us, we have opinions about certain things or use certain topics to, to maybe expound on our own point. When it comes to young people and issues of diversity and social justice, I would really wish we would have those conversations in a broader sense, more than just centered around what our idea is. So if we're concerned about the issues on the Lower East Side, let's always be concerned about them until they're no longer issues, as opposed to attaching them to things we're interested in in the moment and using that, those concerns to bolster our position on something. So that's my report for today, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Councilman Cass?
May I answer the question of Councilman Jones? We do not charge a fee. And when I was a controller, we made a list. Actually, over half of the businesses that have easements don't have legal easements. So the city, that means the city's not indemnified against any damages. Now, that's been pointed out, that, you know, we need to go in there and tighten up our easements. They have to come before us.
It's a free.
Right. We don't charge, but we demand that there's a, an insurance policy. That hasn't been done. So I think I'm gonna point out the administration, along with the Controller's office, that we tighten up on that a little bit. And it has been discussed about charging a one-time fee for a process. And it's a good idea.
Now for your report.
Yep. I'd just like to say that it was a pleasure to attend the grand opening of the Cobblestone Hotel. It was great to see something on the Bayfront. It was great to see something come into the city. I got disenchanted when I watched TV the other day, and they're talking about all the growth of Mill Creek, the restaurants, and all the, you know, it's sickening. And I, and I thought, here's a gentleman like Mr. Kennedy, and hopefully, Mr. Scott, who are gonna put some development into the city. It was great to watch that. And it's great to hear from Mr. Kennedy, his other plans. Hopefully, one more may be involved in the city. And with that, I encourage our Economic Development Office to get out there and start asking questions why people aren't building here. There's gotta be a reason why we don't get the restaurants, why we don't get the new stores, and why we're not getting new development and housing. So to the administration, I say, please ask Economic Development to take a little more interest than just attending wine and cheese parties, and get out there and find out why they're not building here. I'll be attending the Parking Authority meeting next month, and also the pension meetings, and I'll have a report to council. Today, I spent most of the afternoon, actually, the last three days, answering phone calls from some of my constituents. It was a pleasure walking the neighborhoods and seeing the things that they see, much like that gentleman out there that spoke to us. There's a whole wrath of people out there that actually want to do stuff for the community, yet we don't ask them. And they got some of the best ideas in the world. And I will set up a meeting with Jill to maybe relay some of, some of what the people out there think. There's tons of people out there that see their neighborhoods and want to take it back, want to become involved, want to become involved with the Police Department, with the schools, and with, they want to know how government works, who they talk to. And the last thing they want to hear is, when they call down here, is the wrong answer, or somebody telling them something that doesn't make sense. You know, that, they're kind of pushing them away, like, why, you know, why did you, why'd you move here, or something. They don't want to hear that. They want to take back their community. This is what we gotta work on. And that was my promise. Finally, why I voted on why I did for McBride Viaduct, I think it's a foregone conclusion that none of us want to see the, the money lost, and the decision that's been made has been made. But I think that council, at least I as a councilman, I want to see more respect directed toward this office. As a new councilman, I wasn't there when a lot of these decisions were made. And I, the only thing I ask is that we are one of the big, major steps on the ladder. We have to make decisions. And we need the right answers when we make these decisions. And it seems like since I've been on council, the last couple months, we've been having authorities and the Commonwealth and different people coming down here and rushing things in at the last minute. And that's no way to make a decision. We need a little bit more information, and we need to be more part of the process. When that happens, I'll be glad to, you know, start voting on time. Until that time, I think we need more, more information, more material to process our decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Council President. Our, our monthly meeting at the Finance Committee this month, we spent on meeting with the city auditor, who does the audited financial, independent audited financial reports. So we received our draft report for two thousand and thirteen. So we received our draft report, or 2013, at that meeting. We had a good opportunity to go over that and understand the numbers, but also to review the management letter and the comments that the auditor makes for things that we can improve, to do better, and to make our financial position better for the city. So in lieu of meeting, discussing some of the topics that we've talked about at our finance committees, such as the collection of delinquent garbage bills, we talked about the city audit. So I just wanted to touch base on that issue. We have talked a lot in several months at several finance committee meetings about what we do to address the issue of garbage account delinquency. The issue is still something that we are working on, and there were some discussions with Mr. Paul Voitek from the Water Works, who does the billing, is a billing agent for the garbage sewer and water, about starting the new billing process, which we had talked about, which would be combining the sewer and garbage bill onto one bill and having a water bill separately. Currently, customers receive a water sewer bill in one and a garbage bill separate. What will happen with the change in the billing procedure, which are slated to come about for fourth quarter, is that when you fail to pay your sewer bill, which is linked to your garbage bill, if you fail to pay those bills, you will end up having your water shut off. So what we found is the way to influence people to pay those delinquent bills is to punish them in some fashion by shutting off their water. There is a process, there will be warnings that people will receive, they'll be given plenty of notice that this is happening, but this has been our plan going forward, is that, you know, we, for many, many years, we have basically allowed people to be delinquent on their garbage bill with no consequence. So our plan going forward for the fourth quarter was to change the billing mechanism, and we needed to give time for the Water Works to make a new billing protocol and a new billing procedures, which has taken some time. So I think people writing letters to the editor, or sending us a letter, why aren't you working on? We're still working on the change, and it takes time to make that change happen. One of the things that we wanted also to make sure was that the public was informed that the change was coming, and I know several articles have been written in the past about the potential for this change, and I know, I wanted to ask Ms. Beck if there's a planned press conference or press release that might be coming out. I know Mr. Voitek sent some correspondence through Doug Mitchell to ask about what might be the steps to get the public informed. Are you aware of a plan? Would it be possible for you to follow up on that? There was an email that went from Paul Voitek to, I think, Doug Mitchell, Paul Lichtmacher kind of saying how we move forward here, but I know that we want to make sure the public's informed, so whatever you can do to facilitate that, we would greatly appreciate. On another topic, I did finally have the opportunity to go down to the 9/11 memorial that was built down on the library grounds, the Blasco Library Grounds. Not everybody on council, at the time when we had the debate on whether or not we should have a 9/11 memorial at all, whether or not we should bring this big gigantic steel beam into the City of Erie, whether it was necessary to do that in Erie. And there was quite, it was quite difficult to even get that through as an idea for the City of Erie. And Mark Alexandrovich, who was on the council at the time, as you all know, spearheaded that project to make that memorial. And we, as a council, we have a very small budget for council, but we earmarked funds from our small portion of the city budget, which is really small, and put some funds into that memorial to help to, I'm almost done, to help to make that memorial possible. So in any event, I went, I wasn't able to go to the opening, the official opening, because work and stuff like that, you know, how that is, gets in the way of going to everything. And I did make my way down there, and I looked at the 9/11 memorial, and it is just unbelievably beautiful and well-done and outstanding. And so, you know, sometimes you have to fight, well, most of the times, up here, you have to fight to get things done, and people sometimes resist, but I do encourage you all to take a look at the memorial. It is done in such a way that is educational, it is of high quality, it's moving. You really can't look at it without crying. It is very moving. So I'm just proud the council worked on getting that project done, and it is a benefit to our city, so take a look at it. Take your kids, read, you know, remember. Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a quick question before you go forward.
Yes.
In relation to the preferred alternative with the McBride Viaduct, the report, there was one copy in the back. Do we all have to request individually, or how are we going to, over the next 30 days, individually? Look at that, or are we going to collectively get together and look at that, just for the sake of a process?
That's a very good question. What is it, about 125 pages?
Yes, but we don't have the appendixes. We just received the report without the appendixes. I would think we could request it from the city engineer in particular, if he wants the item back on the agenda.
Well, we can see if we can have a copy made. We still have the print shop, don't we?
It's a print shop.
Yeah. See if we can get a, we see if we can get a print shop to make a copy for us.
Well, I guess part of the question, and I don't mean to belabor it, but it is so detailed and extensive, are there areas where we need to just identify, working through the important, yet minutia part of it, to get to the, like, the brass of what we really are concerned about? You know what I mean? I don't know, I know I don't have time to read 500, you know, 300 pages, like that.
Mr. President, would you like me to set up a study session with Kimball and Mr. Tushak for the council to ask the questions that they need to ask about the process? I mean, we can do that if we need to.
Yeah, be good.
Would that be okay with council?
Mr. Mersky, would you, would you ask Mr. Tushak if perhaps he has electronic copy of that giant report that could be placed on?
I'll ask.
SharePoint?
Definitely.
So we could save the paper?
Yeah, that is a lot of paper.
A lot of paper. Since it's not on the McBrideViaduct.com website.
Yeah, and setting that up, would you check with council, get one or two dates from all of us, because there may be a date somebody can't make it regardless?
Right. Well, we'll also, Kimball's coming in from out of town, so we do have to, and Bill Pettit from PennDOT, we can ask too. We'll do our best to fit everybody's schedule.
Very good.
My turn? You're the boss, it's always your turn.
Being that I am a graduate of Jim Winarski University, I have no report.
Is that accredited? Is that accredited or what? Yeah.
Ah, Teresa.
I have no report either, so.
Okay, administration.
I promise to be brief, as always. Just two things. We attended the Roar on the Shore check presentation. $125,000 went to St. Patrick's Haven, that's from the Roar on the Shore, the funding collected from their four-day event over the summer. Want to especially thank Rick Griffith for donating three properties to St. Patrick's Haven, so there's space to build and grow the needed facility that helps so many of our veterans, our homeless veterans. Also, want to commend the Erie Fire Department for the work that they did over the weekend, Sunday morning. Three homes were lost on Lighthouse Street. Of course, a woman perished in the fire, which breaks my heart. Great job to the Erie Fire Department. Homes were damaged, fire engines were damaged, smoke detectors. If anybody needs a smoke detector, please contact the Fire Department at 870-1400. We can put that in your hands. So many of our residents are on limited incomes and senior citizens and can't afford even to go out and purchase them on their own, so we do have them available. Don't hesitate to give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Meetings adjourned.
City Council adjourned at 8:37. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Gatauski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski.